It is on that clock. It is six thirty with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. Tonight, we have a couple of special things to start out with. Let's see, do we have a coach? There he is, that Rick?
I'm Rick.
All right, you want to come up to the podium? Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Rick Wildtrout. I'm one of the coaches for, oh, move up a little bit.
Thank you.
I'm Rick Wildtrout, I'm one of the coaches for the Wade Park nine U blue team.
Tell us what you're doing here tonight.
So, we're here celebrating for the boys. They just got back from Missouri about a week and a half ago. Boys coming up in the middle.
Yep, boys, now you can come on up.
Come on in the middle.
Carla, can we put that on up?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Oh.
Go all the way in the middle.
There it is. Now you can see yourself on a screen.
So, we've got nine of the eleven players here. They got back from Boonville, Missouri about a week and a half ago where they won Cal Ripken Baseball Regional Championship, which means for them next year for their ten U season, their nine U right now, for the ten U season, they actually get to go to the Cal Ripken Baseball Babe Ruth World Series in Denny's, Indiana. So, pretty big, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for them to be able to continue their baseball dream. That's what they're, that's what they're doing. So, they went five and one at the tournament and won against, parents could probably vouch for this, against an opponent who had, who had won very, very well over us twice already this season. And we were able to take the last game ten to five against West Fargo, North Dakota, who we get to see multiple times through the season. So, shows their growth and their maturity through the season. So, congratulations, boys.
All right, yep, congratulations.
Sure, coaches?
Great job, boys.
Coach, did you say West Fargo?
Yes, West Fargo, North Dakota was our rival basically the entire season. They beat us to knock us out of their tournament, and then they won our tournament knocking us out in the championship game. So, it was, it was sweet to go down to Boonville, Missouri and play well and strategize to make sure we were preserving pitchers and the hitters were all there. And then we came back out in the championship game and earned a path to the World Series against them. So, it was, it was special. It was special for them. It kind of was a cherry on top of the cupcake for the boys. They knew what it meant.
Having grown up in Fargo? I love every time West Fargo loses.
You are not the only one. Thank you, boys.
All right, thank you very much, congratulations.
I'm Dave, I'm one of the assistant coaches. It wasn't just their play on the field. These guys got commendations from every team we played about their sportsmanship, and they represented Central Minnesota with, they made their coaches very proud the way they represented themselves and the way they comported themselves. So, want to say thank you to Wade Park for all the support you give our program, and I want you to know that these guys are doing a great job on the field and off. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now you can do it, yep. All right, and then we have one other recognition tonight from the League of Minnesota Cities.
We are out here at The Ledge Amphitheater here in Wade Park. We opened last year in July of 2021. What you see behind me is our seating area that holds up to 5,000 people standing. We do also have portable seats that we bring in that seats about 4,200 people.
Before the, the ledge was built out here, this was an inactive quarry, roughly about 20 acres of heavily wooded area. So, we wanted to build it within its existing environment.
This particular quarry was the old transformer quarry here in Wade Park. It used to be mined by our local mining company here, and since then, they chose to donate this particular piece of property to the city of Wade Park. And knowing this was a hidden gem, we had to find something that we could do with this to make it a real focal statement for the city. This whole process and this project has really been all about collaboration, and it's a collaboration between not only some of our private sector businesses within our community, but also our elected officials here in Wade Park, as well as our county officials, and even some of the other area cities around here supporting us. From the funding standpoint of this, the city received $5 million of general obligation bonds from the state of Minnesota to construct this project. And then the remaining funds of this project were paid for with the city's local regional sales tax. We have a very exciting lineup for 2022. I think we've had, you know, about 40,000 to 50,000 tickets already sold. The economic impact that that has on this community is significant because they don't only just come to the, to the ledge, they also come to our restaurants and, and they stay in our hotels. And this is not only good for Wade Park, but it's good for this entire region.
There was a lot of dedication and a huge amount of passion from the leadership team, the design team, and the council to, to make this a reality. I'm very proud of all that worked on this project, from my staff to all the contractors that, that put their time and effort into this, city council for believing in us that we could do this and pull this off. I truly believe this is the most beautiful amphitheater in the United States.
Nice. All right, you're up, sir.
Perfect, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me, my name is Luke Fisher, and I'm the deputy director at the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Ann Finn. She's going to give a little bit of a legislative update when I get done. But normally, when we come out to do the City of Excellence Award recognitions, we crescendo. We end with the, the video, and I'm really happy that we started with it here because there's so much good energy that you can see just pouring through the project and pouring through the video. And you can see it when you see Shawna talk about the project, there's a spark. Bill has given me a tour of the facility before, and you know that, you know, you, you guys know how important of a gem you have, and it's not a hidden one anymore. Everyone knows about it. So, your project, The Ledge, won an award at our league's annual conference back in June, and we wanted to come here to make sure that you get recognition, and your city council chambers too, for the recognition that you earned. The city of Wade Park earned a City of Excellence Award in a population category of 5,000 to 15,000 for your project, and you won for a number of reasons, but the creativity behind the project, I think, is the one that shines the brightest for me. The active use or the activation of a parcel that would used to be a quarry where you were able to still tip your cap to your history, but look to a really bright future that this community has, that's something to be really proud of, and that's, that's a big deal. You know, as an association, the League of Minnesota Cities represents 835 of the state's 854 cities, so just about everyone. Our largest member is Minneapolis, and our smallest member is the city of Berry. Anyone want to guess what their population is? It's thirteen, thirteen. So, as an association, we get to work with really big cities like Minneapolis, cities like Wade Park, and really small cities like the city of Berry. And we like to say a lot of times that we are exposed to the best of the best around the state. It's part of what we do. We get to see really great mayors, really great police chiefs, city managers, finance directors, even some auditors that sometimes lurk in the back, right? But that's important because we, because we get to see the best, we know when we see it, and you guys are the best. You're the best of the best, and this is the type of project that we would expect from Wade Park. We'd expect it because Shawna's been our president before, and we know how good she is. We see Rick all the time. You're active, you're advocating on behalf of the region. Chief Bentrud has been active with us advocating for mental health, so it's no surprise to us that the city of Wade Park would earn a City of Excellence Award. And so, we wanted to come out and congratulate you for that. Thank you for your hard work. Being a mayor, being a council member, serving the public isn't easy to do today, but you guys do every single time. You come to the council meeting, you've read your packets, right? You're all ready to go, you're ready to make big decisions, and you're making consequential decisions, and this project proves it. So, we want to say congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And if it's all right, I'll turn it over to Ann, who's maybe going to just offer a quick legislative update.
Yep, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. It's so good to be with you tonight. My name is Ann Finn. I represent you as a one of a member, one of a team of six folks who go to the Capitol on your behalf. I work specifically on public safety issues, transportation, and public pensions, so I end up chatting with Shawna from time to time about your priorities and how we can best represent you at the state Capitol. I wanted to spend just a couple minutes, first of all, thanking you all for the participation that you've given us in league activities, including our policy development process. Shawna's been active from year to year in that, and you definitely have left your fingerprints on our legislative policies, and we deeply appreciate that when our members are able to give us that time and the gift of their knowledge. Just briefly, you probably already well know that the last legislative session was pretty unproductive. We were hoping for a bonding bill. Those bonding bills fund projects like the one you just won an award for. Unfortunately, the legislature did not get that across the finish line this year, along with many other city priorities. So, it was a fairly disappointing session, but we are gearing up for hopefully what's something better ahead. We do every year release what we call our law summaries, so this is a document that's available on our website. I think since I've been at the league and I started in 2000, this is the skinniest law summary we've ever produced, and most of the pages are summaries of the things that did not become law. So, it's a little bit sad, but if you do want to dive into some of the things that happened in 2022, that's where you can find those, and if you have any trouble finding it, you can always reach me at the league. We are, along with a number of other city groups, hoping for a special session. It certainly still could happen before this legislature is finished, but it's not feeling like there's a lot of momentum for that right now. So, we are, you know, keeping the conversations going, but so far, we're just not sensing that there's a real spark for that happening this year. We'll certainly keep you posted if we start hearing anything. We know a number of our cities would like to be able to influence a special session if it happens, and we will be right there with you trying to make that happen. We are, as you also likely know, working hard on trying to decipher what the legislature did with the new THC edibles law. That's something that's gotten a lot of attention around the state, and I know city officials in this region have been quoted in the, in the newspaper, are paying close attention to how this rolls out. The good news is we have some really great legal minds at the league, and they are puzzling through what kinds of authority cities have under the new law to do the regulatory work that they want to do and that we know cities are capable of and good at. So, we have put out a frequently asked questions document that's living on our website now and that we're updating almost daily. We're working with other folks like the Police Chiefs Association, the Department of Public Safety, the Board of Pharmacy, and we're trying to stay on top of any new information that comes out to make sure that our cities have as much information as possible to make local decisions about the impact of that law. We also are closely watching the elections, as I know many of you probably are as well. I know there are a few members of this council who probably have elections this year. We know that every member of the legislature, every seat on the, in the legislature is on the ballot this year, along with all of our constitutional offices, so November is a big one. And so far, we haven't really seen any surprises through the primary, but we're paying attention just because we want to see how the composition of the legislature is. And with that, I would just encourage all of you to vote. Vote for folks who care about city issues if you are so inclined. And as part of gearing up for the next legislative session, we have just started our policy development process that I mentioned earlier, and that's the process where we bring in city officials from all over the state to talk about emerging issues and what they would like us to advocate for at the Capitol on your behalf. We're considering lots of different issues right now. We have several meetings, in fact, this week, and we're bringing in experts to talk about things like ambulance service delivery, more about the impact of the edibles legislation, broadband and economic development. We're talking about housing, and that's a big issue all over the state. We're also talking about recruitment and retention issues as they pertain to public safety. We're seeing throughout the state that we're losing police officers, firefighters, emergency medical services responders all the time, and there aren't people coming back to fill in those jobs, there aren't people going to school for that at the same level as we saw even 10 years ago. So, we're paying attention to that, and we're going to see if there's some policy direction that our members can give us about what we can advocate for at the Capitol on that. Other issues include property tax trends, truth in taxation requirements, and of course, local government aid is always a big one. So, Gary Carlson, my colleague, works hard on that issue. We'll be spending some time on that later this week. So, lots going on. You can watch for drafts of those policies. We released them in October for member comment, so I'm sure Shawna will make sure you get those. They'll live on our website too, and we always like hearing from you about things that you like or don't like about the recommendations so that we know that we're as precise as possible when we're talking with legislature, legislators on your behalf. So, with that, I will stop, and again, just congratulations on that award. I've been on panels before where they consider those applications and nominations, and I can tell you that they're very competitive, and it's a real source of pride that you won that. We don't give those out willy-nilly, and you earned it. So, thank you, and feel free to get in touch with me at the league.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody got any questions for the league if they're here?
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher, who is your favorite professor in the political science department at St. John's?
Oh, boy.
Hi.
My goodness, it's been a long time. How are you?
I'm good.
This is crazy. We're classmates.
We were, yeah, I think we had, we had a Cronenbush together.
No.
No, no.
I stayed away from any law classes. At work, they, they tell me I have to remind people all the time that I'm not an attorney.
So, some of you made it and some of you didn't make it right on that class.
We're going to leave that one alone, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
All right, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate your time and coming down here, here up here.
All right, review and approve council agenda. Proposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda. E, approved two AM liquor license renewal for Silverleaf Lodging Group. Item C. Cellulose. Item E, approved tobacco license for North Star Plus LLC. Item F, approved temporary gambling permit for St. Cloud Stand Down. Item G, approved appointing Angela Tyson to St. Cloud Area Human Rights Commission. Angela, Angela. Item H, approval renewal joint powers agreement for You Choose Program. Item I, approved facility lease agreement between a city and the St. Cloud Hospital.
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. All right, First Amendment to Wacosa Revenue Note. Where'd she go? Oh, there you are. I was looking over there. Yeah, anybody have, you want to just stand up and introduce yourself?
Staff, my name's Maran McGill. I'm an attorney, fortunately or unfortunately, unlike the league people here tonight. I'm an attorney with Taflaw Firm in Minneapolis, formerly known as Briggs and Morgan. We are bond counsel to the city of Wade Park, so I'm here on behalf of the bonds, not on behalf of the borrower, and I'm able to answer any questions that you might have about this note amendment. I can also give a brief overview of what's happening, but if you have questions.
Council, we've done this before.
Oh, yeah.
This is, this is kind of just a stamp of approval that doesn't affect our bond ratings or anything.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not on us, it's just, it's something that we can do to help Wacosa, so.
Yep.
Anybody got any questions?
You are having a public hearing on this, so you need to open, open it in closely.
Oh, I do have a public hearing, don't I? Oh, yes, notice is given Wade Park Public Hearing, six thirty PM or soon thereafter on August fifteenth, for the proposal of Wacosa and Minnesota Nonprofit Corporation with federal income tax exempt status, renovating of equipment at thirty, three ten Sundial Drive in the city of Wade Park. The proposed amendments include changes to the prepayment terms, adjustments to the interest rate calculation, and extension of the final maturity date of the note. Following the public hearing, the city council will consider resolution approving or disapproving the amendments. At the time and the place fixed by public hearing, the city council will give all persons who appear the opportunity to express reviews with respect to proposal. Written comments will be considered. Is there anyone here for that public hearing? It is now six fifty-one.
Open?
It's open at six fifty-one. Nobody? Not six fifty-two yet, no. Anyone? Dead silence. Who says time flies?
Yeah. I'll move to close the public hearing, one at six fifty-two.
Second.
Further discussion.
There it is.
There it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, public hearing is closed. Somebody want to move the resolution approving the First Amendment to Wacosa?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Passed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming. That was quick, see, painless.
Yeah, very easy, quick.
As long as you didn't go to school with him, that's okay then.
I have no other classmates present.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. All right, 2021 Audit Review and Fund Transfers.
Good evening. Well, my name's Justin McGraw, and I'm with Conwy, Duth, and Schmucy and the city's auditors. And I'm here tonight to talk about the city's 1231 2021 audits. And you probably got a few products from us. The format that's on the screen is what I'm going to follow tonight. It's a summary of the audited financial statements themselves, as well as our men who we send to you to kind of let you know how the audit went. And we'll cover that as we go through my presentation tonight, but if you're looking for any more information or any more detail on some of the stuff I'm talking about, your audited financial statements are a great place to start. Otherwise, feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions that may come up. So, on page one, we go over what our independent audit report is, and then on page two, some more information about what our independent audit report is, our responsibility as auditors, your responsibility as the city. And the big takeaway from our report tonight is that your financial statements are presented fairly, in our opinions. It can be relied upon for gauge of performance of the city as well as for future decision-making purposes. So, if you don't take anything else away from my presentation, please remember that. On page three, we'll jump into the numbers. This is your statement of net position, so this is the overall balance sheet of the city. And we look at 2021 and compared to 2020, so you can see some of the changes that may have happened during the year, starting at the top. Current assets, these would be your items, like your cash balances, accounts receivable, prepaid insurance, those types of things. You can see here you had a decrease in 2021 compared to 2020. A good portion of that decrease is due to your cash balances going down. There was a lot of cash sitting on hand at the end of 2020 for the amphitheater project that was subsequently spent here in 2021 and converted into a physical asset, which leads us to our next line item, the non-current assets. These are primarily made up of your, your capital assets, infrastructure, roads, buildings, equipment, other improvements. You can see there you had an increase in 2021 compared to 2020. A portion of that is due to the amphitheater project, the Granite View and the Sixth Street Improvement Projects, as well as other equipment purchases that were made during the year. So, you had an increase in all those capital items, offset by depreciation, the wear and tear of the old outstanding items, and you ended up with a, a net increase for 2021. On the bottom half of page three there, your current liabilities, these are items like your routine bills, accounts payable, wages payable, those types of, of items. You had a slight increase in 2021 compared to 2020. That's really due to the timing of payment between the city of Wade Park and the city of St. Cloud for the sewer, sewer services. So, you saw an increase in that accounts payable because sewer services were paid in January versus December this year. So, a slight increase there. And then your long-term liabilities, these are your pension liabilities, your other post-employment liabilities, and then your debt balances. You did see a decrease in those long-term liabilities in 2021. That's mainly driven by your debt balances. You didn't take out any new debt in 2021, and you continued making those scheduled payments of the old outstanding debt, and then the 2014 A bond, that was paid off in full in 2021 as well. So, you saw a decrease there. And at the very bottom, your net position, so you know if you could sell all the assets of the city and pay off all your debts, this is kind of what would be remaining. You had an increase in your net position, and that's kind of the trend we've seen over the years here at the city. The composition is a little different. You can see that net investment in capital assets, that is, all your capital asset balances less any debt owed against them, with the payoff of the debt and your increase in your net capital assets, you saw your net investment in capital assets increase. Same thing on the restricted side, these are funds that the city holds that can only be spent for a specific purpose. Think of those cash balances for the amphitheater construction, you spent that cash, converted into a capital asset, so they kind of have an inverse relationship there. And this is all activities, all areas of the city, all programs and services provided are all kind of summed up here on page three. And moving on to page four, we'll jump into individual funds. So, you kind of see what happened within those funds during the year. On page four, we have the general fund, it's the main operating fund of the city. We look at the cash and investment balances, not only in 2021, but the previous four years, so you kind of see where that general fund has been at. You did see an increase in your general fund cash balances, about $73,000. That's mainly due to the repayment of the interfund borrowing from the water fund that's been outstanding for quite some time. The water fund did have a, a healthy cash balance and was able to repay that general fund from that amount that was owed from, from several years ago. So, that was really driving that increase in that general fund cash balance that you're seeing. We'll look at the activity of the general fund on the next slide. On slide five here, we look at the total revenues, total expenditures of the fund, and then the overall fund balance of the general fund. You can see here that your revenues in 2021 fell short of expenditures, resulting in a decrease in your overall fund balance. And on page six, you can kind of see the sources of your revenue. Typically, taxes has been historically your largest source of revenue, that's no change in 2021, but you had some other changes going on during the year, between 2021 and 2022, or excuse me, 2020 and 2021. The big decrease being that intergovernmental revenue. You saw in the video, you did receive a large amount of money from the state for the amphitheater project that was in that intergovernmental revenue amount last year. This year, you don't have that large kind of one-time revenue item, but you do have the, the ARPA funds, so the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, you did receive half of that in 2021. You should have received the other half here, I think you did actually receive the other half here this summer in 2022. So, your, your intergovernmental revenues are probably still normally high compared to what they were prior to 2020, but you should probably see that again in 2022, then maybe, depending on what happens with the legislature, you may see that level off 2023 going forward. Another item on here, the other financing sources, these are primarily transfers in to the general fund. You did have a lot of transfers into the general fund in 2020 as we closed out several capital project funds that were completed. That cash was then moved to the general fund as well. You didn't have that type of activity at that level in 2021. On page seven, we look at your expenditures of the general fund, and we look at this by what departments using the cash at the general fund. General fund is generating. Typically, public safety, public works have been the largest use of funds in the general fund, that's no change in 2021 here, but there were some changes between the years amongst those departments. Public safety and public works both had a decrease in the expenditures from 2021 compared to 2020, and that's largely due to capital expenditures, equipment, projects, those types of things. So, you had less of that activity in 2021, and then conversely, you And then conversely, cultural and recreation, this is where the amphitheater operations are recorded in the general fund. You did see an increase there in twenty twenty-one with that facility opening, having operating costs for half of twenty twenty-one compared to not being open to the public in twenty twenty. So you see a, a jump there. And then again, other financing uses, that's typically transfers out of the general fund. That was the state bonding money coming in the general fund, being transferred to the amphitheater project fund in the prior year. You didn't have that at that level in twenty twenty. So that's the general fund. Moving away from the general fund, on page eight, looking at some of the special revenue funds of the city. These funds are set up for, to serve a specific purpose around the city. And I'll just touch on a few of them, because you do have quite a few. The local sales tax special revenue fund had a decrease in its overall fund balance during the year. That's largely due to transfers out of that fund, again, into the amphitheater capital project fund to help finance the construction of that facility. The parkland development also had a decrease in its fund balance in twenty twenty-one. Similar to the local sales tax fund, money was transferred out to help finance construction of the amphitheater project. And then on page nine, another big one is the TIP district number two. Number two was the TIP district that had been used to service the two thousand fourteen A debt. So with that debt payoff in twenty twenty-one, a large amount of funds were transferred out of the special revenue fund into that two thousand fourteen A debt service fund to help pay off that debt. So you shouldn't see, until that fund is closed, that district's decertified, I would expect you wouldn't see a lot of decreases in that fund balance going forward. And then moving on to page ten, the capital project fund. So you only got two to talk about this year. That's a, that's a big change from years past. The Rivers Edge Project Fund, that had relatively minor activity during the year, so that fund was closed out to the general fund with construction being complete there. And then the amphitheater capital project fund. So this one's had a lot of activity over the last few years. That's no change in twenty twenty-one, a lot of construction activity going on, but it does seem to be winding down. You can see there in your fund balance, you have about three hundred forty-five thousand dollars left in that fund. You did have an increase in your fund balance during the year, largely due to those transfers from both the local sales tax fund and the parkland development fund. And I know there's still some maybe smaller items compared to the rest of the amphitheater projects still being constructed out there. So we'll see here in twenty twenty-two if that fund is, is relatively done experiencing those capital type of expenses. We can take a look at closing that out as well. On page eleven, moving away from the governmental funds to the business-type activities of the city. The water fund, we'll start with there. Cash and investment balances in twenty twenty-one and the prior four years. You can kind of see from two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty, they've been building that cash balance over the years. And then twenty twenty-one, it went down. Now, this is the fund that had borrowed three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund that was paid back in twenty twenty-one. So without that interfund repayment, you, you would have seen another increase in that water fund cash balance. And then on page twelve, looking at the activity of the water fund. You can see here, it's pretty similar to the prior years. You know, you've, you've been diligent in monitoring those rates of the water fund versus the operation, operating costs. And you had, you had fewer repairs and maintenance in the water fund this year, so that kind of brought down your operating expenses. But you can see revenues have been very consistent over the years, which is, which is great to continue building that reserve for future capital replacement, infrastructure replacement, as the infrastructure that's in place begins to break down, needs replacement. You have those cash balances on hand to help finance at least a portion of those project costs. And then on page eleven, we have the water fund again, and we're looking at the net income amount of that water fund. We take away depreciation, which is a, is a non-cash expense. And we look at basically the water's fund ability, the water fund's ability to generate cash to pay its, its debt payments. It's got three years left on the debt that's in that water fund. And you can see here, just from operations, it's, it's being able to generate cash to make those debt service payments, which is great for a water fund to continue not only building that cash reserve, but pay off that debt. And then on page fourteen, we move on to the sewer fund. Sewer fund had a similar story to the water fund. It's been generating that cash balance, building up that reserve over the years. And it's really the, I guess it's really the feel-good story of the city. For the past few years, when I know I've been here to do the presentation, be able to tell you about those rates being set at a level that's appropriate to not only cover those current operating costs, but build up a reserve to pay for eventual future capital replacements. So that's a great story, again, for the sewer fund. I want to commend you for staying on top of the sewer and the water fund and those rates to make sure that you're setting that fund up for success in the future, where you may not need that interfund borrowing that we just paid back to the general fund. And then on page fifteen, we look at the operations of the sewer fund. The sewer fund, the operating expenses overtook the operating revenues, and a lot of that is due to your depreciation. So the sewer fund, it's about almost half a million dollars in depreciation expense in there every year, because sewer assets are so expensive. So that really is what's driving that decrease in your, your net position. But you can see from a cash flow standpoint, the fund's doing very well, but it's not quite covering that depreciation on those long-term assets. And the sewer fund has no debt, so we don't have to look at its ability to cover its debt balances. On page sixteen, stormwater fund. Stormwater fund, again, similar to the sewer and, and water. It's generating cash from operations. You can see that by looking at the cash flow of the stormwater fund. And really, this year, there was relatively minor activity in that storm sewer fund. If you look at page seventeen here, only about eighteen thousand dollars in expenses in that fund. So minor repair and maintenance, repair and maintenance typically is the largest fund or expense of a stormwater fund. That was no change in twenty twenty-one, just less repairs were needed around the city. So it's being able to generate revenue, minor repairs, and you saw that increase in your net position of, of the stormwater fund. Moving away from the numbers, we also look at a few other items as part of our audit. Compliance is a big one for auditors. Minnesota League compliance. We look at the state, the city's compliance with state statutes, from things like contract bidding, conflicts of interest, depository of public funds. We're happy to report that we came across no issues of non-compliance, which usually tells us, as auditors, a few different things. One, that your team here knows what those laws are, and, and two, that they're making sure they're being followed. So hats off to Shawna and Carla and everybody else in the city for making that happen. And then government auditing standards. We look at internal control of the city, kind of how financial information flows through the city from the time, you know, a bill comes in the mail to the time a check gets cut and goes out in the mail. We have one item we noted here, and this is the auditor repaired financial statements. With the product you have in front of you, this does come from the city's financial records, but we put it in that format. And that's something that's new this year for the city. With the change of the finance director position, we took on the, the whole process of preparing your financial statements. So that is something that we didn't have to do in the past. We're doing it now. So we put that in there. Just to let you know, we did put this product together for you today.
It's not uncommon for cities, correct?
Thank you, Shawna, yeah. That's not uncommon for a, for a city of your size. I only have one or two clients that don't have a finding like that, where us as auditors are putting those reports together. So it's not something to necessarily throw a red flag up about, just something for you to be aware at, at your level that this is a product we're putting together. And then in addition to the financial statements, we also issue a, a letter to you at the governance level to let you know how the, how the audit went. Any difficulties we encountered, any changes in your accounting practices, any disagreements we came across. We're happy to report none, and, and you know, we, we do ask a lot, not only of your team here, but your banks, your lawyers, the county, the state, several different people, your engineers, several different people in that process that we asked for information for, or we asked questions to, that helped us out to get us to the point we're at tonight. So we do appreciate everybody's willingness to, to help us out there. And then the last part we'd like to talk about is any recommendations we may have. So one of them we had last year that we touched on again this year is timely bank reconciliation. So you know, every, every month when that bank statement comes in the mail, it's important to check that as, as quickly as possible against what's recorded in your, your city's accounting software, in your accounting records. And if you have any differences, you can catch it quicker, the, the closer you are to when it happened versus six, seven months down the line. So this is one thing we want to recommend. I know we've had some software issues here at the city, getting that worked out with the vendor, and some changeover personnel. So that's always kind of a tough transition period, but we do recommend, as quickly as you can, once that bank statement comes in and reconciled it back to your, your records, to avoid any, any changes or any mistakes that get made. And then the new accounting standard we have coming out here, I heard you talking earlier in the agenda about a lease with the city's, what, St. Cloud Hospital. There's a new accounting standard coming out that addresses leases specifically. So this is standards coming out for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. It'll change how your financial statements look a little bit. You're gonna have some new items on your statement of net position. For instance, with your leasing a building to the, the hospital, you'll have a lease receivable, and you'll have some lease revenue now being generated, which is a little different than what you've seen in the past, where depending on the type of lease, it may have been just a note disclosure versus actually on your financial statements themselves. So same thing if you're a lessee leasing equipment, leasing space, you're gonna see that same type of changes to your, your financial statements going forward. So just to give you a heads up, and we've already talked with Carla and Shawna here about kind of what the information we're looking for when it comes time to implement that standard. So I think we got a good head start on it. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up that, hey, this is something you may see new next year, so. So with that, on the last page is my contact information. So if you have any questions, or if you're looking at this in your free time and you think I should ask Justin this, or I wish I would have asked him that, you can always feel free to call, email, or if you're ever in which field, stop by the office, so.
Alright, council, any questions, comments? If not, I need a motion to approve the fund transfers in the twenty twenty-one audit. Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Ken.
Alright, next item is, I get. Consider emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium on the sale of hemp-derived THC continued. If you remember, that was tabled last time. If we do nothing with it, it will automatically go away tonight, or we can take it off the table.
I'd just assume go ahead and take it off the table and allow Paul to...
Oh, 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 I need a second to that. You're gonna take, make a motion to that?
I don't know why we'd take it off the table.
You want to make a motion to take it off the table, Mike?
You already got the draft going, so.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. It's not debatable. Alright, go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, and I'd like to direct Paul to go ahead with the city ordinance on, on this type of use.
Okay.
What about timeline?
By next council meeting. Or prior, prior to, so we can...
Oh, it's gotta be published before the next council.
Yeah.
Once we get a draft of it, we'll email that out to you and make sure you get the emails.
We're, we're working on an ordinance.
Maybe in ten days.
We're working on an ordinance so we can have it published ten days prior to the next council meeting, so we can either approve or deny it at the next council meeting.
Yep.
Alright. I don't think there's...
You don't need any further action on that.
I don't think we need anything else on that. Alright, item D, consider resolution calling for election on regional trail projects and public safety project.
So the state legislature in the twenty twenty-one legislative session allowed us to place two questions on our general ba, um, election ballot for this fall. And these are related to the potential of utilizing an additional half of one percent of sales tax for, to spend up to twenty million dollars for a public safety facility, and then up to seven point five million for regional trail connections. And so I can go through the language, essentially what the legis, what the, what the ballot language is. And let me just pull that up here, because it's a little bit easier to talk about it when I... So the resolution includes the ballot language, and so this is a step, if the council is wanting to go ahead and consider moving forward with this, that we would have to take. These are the two questions that they would be asked. And if you recall, when we were going through the legislative process, they made us put in specific timeframes and how much money we were gonna spend. And so we are anticipating that a half of one percent would generate about one and a half million dollars a year, which would be money that would just be collected in Wake Park, not shared with any of our regional cities, and be used for these two projects specifically. So if you do that, the first project of up to twenty million dollars, it's about thirteen years of collections if that first thirteen years was being used towards just funding that public safety facility. And then for the trail connections, the trail connections would be approximately, I think, five to seven years, if I'm trying to remember what that number was off the top of my head. But together, what they did, and what you'll see in this ballot language, is, is that it put the two together and so that it said that we could collect it for up to nineteen years total. So what it means is that for each one of these questions, so if, let's take the public safety facility, we would have twenty million dollars that we could collect for no more than nineteen years and no more than twenty million dollars, so whichever one came first. If we had, our projections were low, and we collected more than that revenue, we would have the ability to end that sooner than later. If, then the same holds true with the, the trail connections question, is if the, it's a seven point five million dollars that would be collected, and it would be either up to the seven and a half million once we've collected all of that, or nineteen years total. So it can't be done after that period of time. Both questions stand on their own, which means one, or both, or none could be approved, and they would be moving, they could move forward or not forward, depending upon, you know, what, what happens with those two particular questions. As far as the public safety facility, if you recall, the intention would be to look at constructing a new public safety facility. This would allow us to purchase land, would allow us to construct the facility, and it would allow us, us, us to issue bonds to be able to pay for those things over a period of time, which is where that nineteen years also is helpful for us. As far as the regional trail connections, if you recall on that particular one, we have the Lake Wobegon Trail that comes in from the north side. What this would allow us to do is take the trails that come in from the Recoree Trail, which is the Glacial Lake State Trail that connects with Recoree or Will, if it isn't yet, it'll be coming in along the one thirty-eight area. So the idea would be is that we would take these funds and connect the two together and create some safe pedestrian crossings. And so that's where, you know, we've anticipated that the cost of doing some, to doing that work is about seven point five million dollars. Which, so if the council's interested, you would have to pass this resolution to continue to move forward. And I can stop talking and answer any questions that anyone might have.
Counsel, any questions?
If we go over our projected amount?
We can't. Can't.
The projected annual amount, you mean?
Well, yeah, I mean, okay, our collection amount up to nineteen years.
Yeah.
You said it would be around twelve or thirteen. If we had any extra money after those amount of years, you can't use it for any other type of...
No, that's what's...
Tax stops, the tax stops and that...
What the...
As we get enough money to pay it, it's paid.
Yep. So the difference, the difference between this sales tax and our regional sales tax that we have is that the regional sales tax just creates broad categories, right? And so there's not a total dollar amount, there's just a year when it expires. And it basically says it can be used for regional transportation, community parks, facilities, trails. And so what this one is, and this is where the law changed back, and I believe twenty eighteen, that it made it, that you had to be specific about projects, and it'll, the legislature limited each city to only fi, up to five projects. We chose, we had three projects, if you recall. We had the Tenth Avenue on there. Tenth Avenue was removed by the legislature because the legislature did not include transportation projects into sales tax. So for us, it's these two particular questions. They had to be project-specific, they had to have an up to dollar amount. You couldn't collect any penny over that. It couldn't go towards any other project, and only for those years specific. So if we get anything over that, we're just done collecting it, and the tax is done after those projects are fully funded at their, the amounts that are listed or the years expired. So if we, for whatever reason, didn't collect enough money and it was nineteen years, we would be done after that nineteen years.
Any other questions?
I have, I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Yeah, first of all, I'm uncomfortable with the twenty million dollars for a new building. Part of that is because I don't know if we moved the police department out of this building. What are we going to do with this building, and where is the funding gonna come from, whatever we're gonna do with this building? whatever we're gonna do with this building? Now, it makes me a little uncomfortable.
That's a separate question, but, you know...
No, it's a tied-together question. You take the space and vacate it here and they move somewhere else. We've still got the fire department here, but we also have space that needs to be brought into the building so the rest of the staff can use that space, otherwise it sits empty. And it's gonna take funding for that. And I'm just wondering, it just seems to me like it's an awful lot of money for a question we haven't finished, we haven't really fleshed out all the way.
We aren't, this is for the, to purchase land and to construct a facility. We haven't determined where that's gonna be. If the council chooses that that's going to be here and then this building is added on, that's constructing the public safety facility and gives you the ability to do that. But I, there's, there is no space currently in the place that we have. So through our facility need study, we have identified some particular pieces of property that we've had interest in and we have identified different things. Is there going to be a cost to doing that? Yes, the first step that we have, remember, is just to be able to determine if we have funding to be able to do that. That would mean that we would have to also look at what potential we can do for what happens when this area vacates. That, I'm not going to discount that at all. But this gives us a funding mechanism that at the time, you know, when the legislature, this council voted to have that item be, to go before the legislature for consideration. So now it's up to you as to whether or not you want to put on the ballot.
As far as, say, if the space was vacant right now in its office space, why does that require any money if we wanted to move some aspect of administration over there? Whether it be water, billing, the mayor's office could be there.
Hey boy, time I get one.
You get one back.
I, I will tell you...
So I don't understand why that would take money into, right, if that one's available in today's world.
I'm not going to lie, I'm sure there will be some money that would have to go into this facility. But to what extent would that be? It's too early to tell at this particular point. Part of the reason why you don't have plans and specs and all of that stuff is because you need to know whether or not you're gonna be, what you're gonna be doing and if you have any funding to do it. And so this gives you a mechanism to be able to do that. The other thing that this does is that it allows you to use sales tax for something that would otherwise be used to pay for with property taxes. And that's, to me, a significant piece of that. But if you look at, and I think the numbers of 20 million, which I don't disagree, $20 million to me for a facility seems to be a lot of money. But if you look at what was constructed in Sartell, which is probably the last one, that was close to that. And if you take land values and stuff into that, you're very close to what those numbers are gonna be.
It's a million or two just from land.
And we're talking a couple of years out before we would even consider constructing it.
Yeah, we figured this out, this costs the average citizen in Wake Park about five bucks a year.
In sales tax.
Sales tax, extra sale, an extra tax that you're paying, about $5. If we put it, if we put it on your taxes, I don't even wanna go to where that would add up for 19 years, how much that would add.
Several hundred dollars, several hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions?
And as far as I'm concerned, we know we need the space if the police department was gone.
Yeah, when this building was built, we had less than 10 people total in the police department. We now have about 30, so...
I mean, just from the administration side as well.
Yeah, that's everybody in the police department.
No, I mean...
There.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We have no space either, no.
No, we don't.
They're using the mayor's office.
The mayor's sharing one with me, which works fine for now.
Any other questions or comments? I need a motion to approve or deny the resolution calling for an election on regional trail and public safety projects.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. Own favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
I am opposed.
Ken, what did you, I'm sorry.
I'm opposed.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Four to one.
The only other thing I wanted to just mention, because I didn't get to mention it downstairs, but it's relative to this, we have started having some conversations with the neighborhood associations about the referendum coming up and doing some education. And so we will continue to do that. There's also the, the senior pickup picnic, sorry. That's coming up next Wednesday.
Oh, Jesus.
Which is the 24th of August, that we would also have an opportunity there to also speak about the sales tax referendum as well.
All I can say to that is we have to get going on it now because last election was when everybody sent in their pre-v ballots
Yep.
and were sent in, most of them, in the middle or first part of October, so...
That's why we're trying to do it now.
So there'll be a flyer that'll go out to all the residents by the end of September. We're also doing a little sales tax video to go out on social media because there's a lot of residents that review it that way as well. And then we'll have an opportunity and we're getting out to as many of the neighborhood associations. We also went out to National Night to Unite. And any neighborhood association meetings that we've been able to reach, we have been able to do that as well.
Can we put that on our Spectrum channel?
Sure.
Yep.
Yep, we can put it on any social media we have.
Yep.
Okay.
Good, good call, I keep forgetting, yes.
I would suggest getting it on there as soon as possible because like I said, people are sending ballots in and...
I, it'll be...
A lot of them were in by September last year already, so...
Well, they're not out yet, so...
Yeah.
They're not out yet, but...
No.
No, I...
You can't have it out yet.
I just wanna make sure that you understand that...
I got it.
You can apply for it, but it do not send the ballots.
Well, we gotta have this on the ballot.
Right.
All right, next item, park and park building upgrades. Bill?
Yeah, council. Over the last number of months, my staff has worked with local contractors to review the park buildings that are in the city. And mainly, they are in Rivers Edge Park and also Community Park. We've got a number of different items that need to be upgraded, if I wanna call it that, in the park system for both. And we have reviewed this at a work session before and earlier tonight. So I'm just gonna kind of briefly go through it really quick here. We received two quotes on every facet here and what the numbers I'm gonna bring forward tonight are the low quote. So in roofing, we need to have a new roof replaced on the warming house in Rivers Edge, all eight dugouts in Quad, at the Quad Fields, Rivers Edge. The Quad Building needs a new roof on it. The Boy Scout Building is the city's asset, that's in need of a new roof. And then the Community Park South Pavilion also. The Boy Scout Building is, I'm gonna recommend that we look at that one where we just buy the materials and the Boy Scouts would strip it and shingle it for us. Other items on it were miscellaneous, if you wanna call that, or siding with buildings. So at the Quad Building, excuse me, the concession windows and the siding need to be replaced on that. The Quad Building needs new coiled-up concession doors, stainless steel to meet health code, along with the health code issue of the concession countertops going to stainless steel. And then there's five doors that need to be replaced down there. Boy Scout Building is in need of a door and new siding on it. And then they have a small overhead door. All these, all these total up to $300,000, $400,000, depending on what we wanna look at it. We did review the Parkland budget, fund budget, and we're around $240,000, plus or minus. And so I'm recommending tonight that we walk through this a little bit with some of the numbers, but I'm looking to spend somewhere around $140,000 here. So the last thing on this list is the Community Park, what we call the Octagon Building or the Square or the Beer Stand and those buildings. So in, for those buildings, we looked at it two ways. There is health issues, health code issues, electrical issues. They do need new roofs on it. So we had looked at it for two different directions. Number one was is to look at remodeling them, coming up to code and putting a standing seam roof on it to match the main pavilion. That came in $159,000. If we did those buildings and just replaced it with asphalt shingles and just remodeled them back, that's about $141,000. We also looked at the possibility of removing those two buildings and building a new open-air pavilion that would match the existing Community Park Pavilion, which would be multi-use, no doors, anything like that. It'd just be wide open with electrical and lighting in there to serve all the needs for the, any of the festivals that are held down there today. That came in at roughly $198,000. So, so there's a couple of things here. Number one is we can discuss the viability of what we wanna do with the Octagon and the Beer Stand. And then the other is, do we look at putting our money there or do you wanna put your money into the remodeling or upgrades to the roofing and some of the other issues at the Quad Building? I came up with a total of about $131,000 if we were gonna do roofing. It's not gonna cover it all. That would leave us about another $100,000 of needs down the road or we can put it all towards this. So I'll just make my recommendation here twofold. One is you can choose to do something with the Octagon Beer Stand as it is and remodel. You're probably gonna be okay there, roughly in that $140,000. If we do standing seam roofs, probably not. We'd have to come up with something, a kicker from the reserve fund to balance that out. If we wanted to go away from that and just do some remodeling on some of the other buildings, my recommendation would be is we would do the eight dugout roofs at the Quads for $24,500 is low. The new roof on the concession building for $23,000. And then I would have the Boy Scout roof redone, just for material only at $9,600. That totals up to about $57,000 in roofing. Then down in the siding and miscellaneous, I would recommend doing the work at the Quad Building and bringing that up to code. That would be the doors and windows, or windows and siding, excuse me, for 17.5. The concession coiled-up doors for 24.5. Just rounding off here, concession countertops for about 15.8 and the door replacements at 16.1. That totals about 73.9. So the grand total between those two is $131,000. That's about the best math I can come up with. Like I said before, this is an à la carte system. We don't have to do everything, we can pick and choose. I'm just trying to get you guys into an area here and then just open it up for discussion here. I did bring it to the park board. They really didn't have any strong feelings either way. If nothing else, their feelings were more with the Octagon Beer Stand. And they were more leaning towards more an open air, but they really didn't know. They just probably wanted a little bit more time to think about it. So just being honest, let you know.
Council, any questions or comments?
Yeah, if we don't do anything with them two buildings in the Community Park, the Octagon Square, are you going to? I mean, I can stand under it and see daylight through the roof. It is horrible. So I beg to ask how it got into this condition. So help me out here. This is, that is bad, horrible. At least all these other facilities have shingles. That building has no substrate rafter tails.
I guess a point to what you're saying is you wanna spend money on those, which we talked about a little bit before, we wanna save those or try to save them. We don't wanna knock them down. Is it possible that we would take, maybe finish the Quads over there, get that done this fall? And as we go into our budget for next year, try to find a way to get those two done properly rather than doing piecemeal. I think that would be a better way to approach it rather than trying to fix up or put Band-Aids on it, spend money that we could save to get it done properly the first time.
Mike, they need roofs. There is nothing.
But it doesn't do any good to put a roof on a house that's gonna fall down.
It's not going to, this will prevent that.
I disagree with that, I don't think they're in that good a shape. The other thing I think...
They shouldn't have gotten the way they are.
Well, you know what, we shouldn't have had World War I and World War II either, but we did.
It's not being maintained.
We can't go back in history.
It's not being maintained.
But that doesn't make them right or wrong in today's world anymore.
Well, I think once we get it done the right way, they better be maintained for the rest of whatever. I've noticed, and I have to thank Bill for getting that little park done in Angus Acres. People sure do like it the way it is right now. And it was done right, it was redone and done properly. And this is the way those buildings should be done. If it's gonna take to wait for, what is it, six or eight months till next spring, start that project, get it done and get it done properly, then I think it's a good waiting period. But I'm not saying that, you know...
Those two projects should also be, we should address those to the Legion and the Moose and see if they're interested in any kind of cost share on it or maybe spending the money for the shingles on them. Maybe that's, maybe that'll do it, I don't know that. But I think that's a conversation we need to have. Bill and I can have that if we want to sometime or whatever with, and get a hold of those two governors, I guess they're called, or Governor of the Moose and Commander at the Legion.
Yeah.
I think that'd be the best way, so we get it done, get it done right so it lasts for a period of time, other than just putting a Band-Aid on it and it seems to get forgotten because...
I can tell you, if that building's look like that during SPOSTHOD next year, I'll be the one standing there screaming.
Well, that's why I say we can get on it and...
I am, I'm done with it.
And first April, May, when it gets building time to get her done. I mean, it gives us a little bit of time to decide how we can do it and get it done and work with people. Put a date that we wanna start April 1st to have finished by June. I mean, that's the only way we can do it. If we want all these projects done the right way, that's...
We gotta have money to do it.
At least everything in that ballpark has a roof. These buildings do not have a roof.
They're in tough shape, everything's in tough shape. And there you go, we didn't take care of them. If we don't take care of the other ones, they're gonna just go worse too, so... There is no win on this one. It seems we can get more done. And I think we still need that conversation with the Moose and the Legion. And if that's what it takes...
We're letting the building nuts in horrible condition get worse while the other ones are still fine.
To let them get worse.
While at least the water isn't leaking in or running through or see daylight when I'm standing under the eve of the building.
But I hate to say it, those buildings are only used three days out of the year, four days out of the year, where the other ones are used.
I understand that.
I think there's a lot of difference in that. And I'm not saying they shouldn't be fixed, because they should be. What I'm saying is we're talking about people seeing these buildings and not seeing buildings and how many times they're used, it's not a comparison.
Well, if we don't put a roof on these buildings, we won't have them to use at all. So why don't we put the roofs on at least?
That's, that's where all these, that's where the Quads are in Rivers Edge.
I can't imagine going through another winter where the roofs are really bad and then coming back this spring, we're gonna, we expect them to be any better? I mean, I think we need to put roofs on these buildings and get them done.
No, that's why we're going to rebuild them next spring so that they're ready for the next summer.
I guess my question to Bill would be, Bill, if we fix the roof on that building and then next year say, well, all of a sudden we got money to fix up the buildings? What, I mean...
I don't understand the difference.
Can we fix, can we fix the building with the new roof or should the building be fixed?
You're talking about the Octagon and the...
Yeah.
Okay, so just...
Oh, not, yeah, the Octagons down at the, down at the park.
Community Park. Okay, so, all right, now, what was your question? I didn't...
If we put roofs on it, are we gonna tear the roofs off next year when we redo them?
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I'm questioning your priorities here.
That, that's exactly it. I mean, you could do one or the other.
Well, that can't cost $159,000 to put a new, to put shingles on those buildings.
It's $141,005, that's to meet all the health codes. Remember, you had to have stainless steel counters and all that stuff in there to meet health codes.
No, we're just talking about a roof now, we're just talking about shingles.
Oh, you just wanna do the shingles on it? Oh, I'm sure, no, it's less, gonna be less than that, yeah.
There is...
It better be.
Oh, yeah, no, I know that, I don't have that number, Mayor.
There is some rafter work that needs to be done. It was so bad, the rafters' tails are gone. I don't know if anybody understands me, but that's the structure that holds the roof up.
I understand that, but some of the other stuff can wait till next year, correct.
But that's the problem.
If that's the problem.
Other stuff can wait till next year if you want. So the intention here was, is just to get started the debate, figure out where we're at, 'cause we don't have enough money to do it all this year.
Right.
Okay, whatever the balance was, it would be put back into the budget and see where it lands. I have put this in the budget for the last two or three years. I have had roof replacements down there. Every year we kind of pull it out, so.
Yeah.
On, on my behalf, I'm telling you, I have done that. Yes, are they bad? Yes. Should they have been replaced three years ago? Yeah.
All right, Counsel, what's your wishes? Is, no matter which one we do, we gotta do it. If we're gonna do any of them, we gotta get them going anyway, we gotta get them going, because otherwise it's not gonna get done.
I guess my opinion, my opinion and my, would be to take care of the quads with the, uh, the amount of money that we have available. And, uh, the Boy Scout roof added in there.
That's all roofing, yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know what, what are you talking about, Bill? You're talking about the shingles on the roof.
Yeah, yeah, the only way-
Of the quad, right?
I'm sorry, Mike, what was?
You want the, um-
The dugouts done.
The war, the house.
The concession stand.
The concession stand.
Yep, so it's-
And the Boy Scout building roof.
And the Boy Scout building roofs.
Yep.
And what else did you wanna add into that for the hundred and-
I, I was just trying to come up with a, with a number, but the top to be a hundred and forty thousand each, and that's where I came in with that. Like you said, Mike, eight dugout roofs, a concession roof at the, and the Boy Scout material cost, shingles. And then below is all items related to the quad building. Windows siding, doors, coil-up doors, countertops and door replacement. That gets you to the hundred and forty.
And I'm still suggesting your thinking is flawed.
Okay.
So, if, if there's something different there that we wanna push off, if we wanna, so I'm just throwing this out there. And I'm just, I'm estimating here, but you could probably, s- I would say with the quad building, you definitely wanna do the windows and siding right now, and the door replacement.
No.
And then put the coil-up doors and the stainless steel countertops off for next year and do, if you wanna do the, if you wanna keep those octagon and the beer stand buildings, then just roof those buildings this year. We'll take, then go back next year in the budget, we put in the money to do the, the, the counters and the doors and the electricals. And split the baby up, at least, at least you cover the, cover, get that done. So, I'm just throwing out as a, kind of a second.
That would be my motion, that we do those roofs this year. What roofs?
That would be for the beer stand and the octagon building with asphalt shingles. We can't afford to do the standing seams, so I'm taking that off the table.
We don't know how much that is.
I don't know, but I can't imagine, it's, it's much more than twenty thousand dollars, if it's even that.
Why don't we just, why don't we just do those and do the rest of them too? We got two hundred and forty-some thousand in the park fund, we're gonna use a hundred and forty of it. I understand we shouldn't burn it down to nothing, but now we're talking, now we're talking pennies.
You're, you're right, Mayor, that's a choice for you, I was just trying to leave a question, so.
You've got-
It doesn't make where we spend it.
Well, you, you, in here, you have for the octagon and square building-
We only follow in there, but we could probably go-
Thirty-eight thousand for asphalt.
I'm sorry, Mike, what was that?
For the octagon and the square building, you got thirty-eight thousand five hundred for asphalt shingles.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Okay, so if you want a hundred and forty for the other project, plus forty thousand for this, that's one eighty. I would move to approve a hundred and eighty dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand out of the-
Yeah, do that.
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, we didn't get a second on Vic's motion.
Oh, okay.
I gotta make sure that we understand what Vic's motion is though, 'cause I know you had said to do the roofs, but I wanna make sure that we're clarifying what those roofs are. So, Mike, he started with a motion, so we gotta just make sure that-
I don't even know if Mike's was a motion.
It wasn't yet, he was gonna-
Well, I was trying to, but it got stopped, so.
So Vic, Vic, what is yours? Would, would you like to say?
He wants to do the roofs, right?
Yeah.
But I just wanna make sure that I understand which roofs we can do with the money, that's what, I'm confused.
I'm only hearing on half side here, so I don't hear all this stuff going on. You decide, I wanna get the roofs done, you tell me which buildings we wanna get the roofs done on, and that's part of the motion. All of them from our concern.
Okay, Bill, I have a question for you, because I don't know myself, from what I'm looking, and I know I wasn't here at the last work session when you talked about this in more detail.
I want all of the roofs done with asphalt shingles.
All right, what does it cost to do all of the roofs on these buildings with asphalt shingles?
Twenty-four thousand five and twenty-three thousand and ten thousand.
Eighty-nine thousand plus, or no, eighty thousand plus, hang on, hang on.
Eighty thousand one eighty-five.
Plus thirty-eight, thirty-eight, so forty thousand, so a hundred and twenty thousand to do all the roofs.
All right, so you have, you have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I just wanna know the roofs for Vic's point.
On which roofs? Because we got a South Pavilion roof and we got a Boy Scout building, the Boy Scout building.
I'm including all roofs, including the South Pavilion. I would pull South Pavilion out of it, that does not need to be done this year.
I would agree.
You could wait one year with that, so let's say, so that's seventeen-five, so you're roughly about a hundred thousand for roofs.
All right, so you have a hundred thousand dollars for roofs. You have a balance in the Parkland fund of two hundred and forty thousand, correct?
Correct.
So what the recommendation that Vic has on the table would be, and I wanna make sure, 'cause I wanna know too. So if you're gonna do all the roofs, with the exception of, and that's up to you.
South Pavilion.
South Pavilion.
And not the warming house roof.
And not the warming house, you're exactly right, Mayor, so that's, yep.
So you've got, okay, let me repeat.
Twenty-four thousand five.
But, yep, twenty-four thousand five for the eight dugout roofs.
Twenty-three thousand.
Yes.
And nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five. What's that total?
Fifty-seven, one thirty-five.
Now we gotta add about thirty-five for the community park, right?
Forty thousand for-
Forty thousand for the square and the octagon, yeah. So now you're at ninety-seven, one thirty-five.
Okay, and now add?
That's twenty-
I'm gonna ask Vic to change his motion to adding concession windows and siding for seventeen thousand five hundred forty-six.
Okay.
Concession coil doors, twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. Concession countertops, fifteen thousand eight oh eight. Door replacement of sixteen thousand one hundred. And I'd like to have him change that and take that out of the park funds.
Are you doing?
Then it's done.
Does my motion have a second?
Not yet.
No.
I'm outside of it.
No, I want you to change it to have those. We don't have a second, you can make your own motion.
Not, not till we resolve this one.
If you wanna-
We don't have a second on your motion, so we can do anything.
I'll second Vic's motion.
Done.
But nobody knows what it is.
Hold on, I, hold on, I'm just adding.
That's not right, it's not all the roofs, 'cause we're not doing the warming house, and we're not doing, and we're not doing the community South Pavilion. So we're not doing all the roofs. So make sure we know what all the roofs are.
And I've got them, I've got them logged here on my sheet, so, I do have that. And then colors adding in the-
So, so if you add everything, that, so if you add the twenty-four five, twenty-three thousand, nine six, ninety-six thirty-five, plus the forty thousand for the octagon, plus if you're adding in Mike's four things from the siding, that gives you a hundred and seventy-one.
That's not in there.
Yeah, it is.
Well, that's too much.
Four things here, from here, there's these four that you said.
Well, he, that's, which motion is it? Vic's motion is for the roofs.
Ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars for quad dugouts, eight of them, quad concession building. The Boy Scout shingles. The octagon and beer stand roof only. That's the roof that is in the ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Ninety-seven thousand?
Ninety-seven thousand one thirty-five.
Yes.
That's where you're at.
I, I, I will accept that.
Is that what your second is? Do you concur with that as a second?
To me, we need roofs before we worry about siding them doors.
I agree with you, but I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, that it, 'cause it doesn't include those two roofs. Correct? It doesn't include, no.
Doesn't include the warming house, and it doesn't include the South Pavilion.
Right, yeah, 'cause-
All this includes right now is just the roofs, there's four roofs, five roofs.
Now, you can make another motion after this if you choose to.
Oh, we can kill this one if we want.
You can do whatever, yes.
Well, we have a second.
You do.
Don't tell me how to run it, I can, I can run a meeting.
Who's second?
This is getting to me. This is ridiculous.
Well, then I'm gonna call the vote.
Any other questions, comments? On favor of Vic's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So who seconded that?
Frank.
I'm looking at you and I call you Ken.
All opposed?
Aye.
What did, how did you vote?
I voted, yes.
No, I'm not looking at you.
I voted for it.
Okay, so it passes three to two, which that's a big mistake, because now we haven't fixed anything.
All right.
We have fixed it.
I am gonna go back over this again. We, we have passed the roofing.
Yep, we're past that now.
It would've been much easier if we would've just added this from the beginning and, and give me time. I'm gonna add to this repair, the concession window siding, the concession coil doors, concession countertops, and door replacement. Would've been so much easier to do that in one motion.
I hear you.
Uh, so I would, at this time, make a motion to add those to the replacement roofs.
What does that do for a total, second, what does that do for a total?
We're, I'm adding that up here.
That was a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
How much?
That's with the roof.
Seventy, I get seventy-three, seventy-three nine twelve is for what Mike just totaled up there.
Plus?
Seventy, seventy-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars to do what Mike's motion is. If you added that to what was previously done at the ninety-seven, you're at, you're expending some, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars total out of Parkland funds.
Yeah, I'll take that out of the park, park, uh, dedication fund.
Okay, who seconded that?
I did. Any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Yes.
Was the same way, but different people.
But just, so, can I have one moment, just so that we're all on the same page, make sure that we've got this?
No.
I, please.
It's done, go back and read the minutes, no.
Okay. So we are, we are doing the quad dugout roofs, the, the quad building roof, and we're purchasing ninety-six hundred dollars worth of shingles for the Boy Scout building, and they will put them on. We are also doing the doors and windows, or the windows and siding and doors at quad building, the coil-up door at the quad building, and new countertops. What was left out there is the warming house roof and the South Pavilion roof. I will be putting that into the, into the budget, so at least it's documented into the budget. I will also be putting on the Boy Scout building doors and siding. And I am proposing, we got a quote to do steel at sixty-one thousand, or the Nova Brick for sixty-eight. I'm still putting it forward at sixty-one thousand, 'cause I think that's what you guys wanted to do, is steel siding and the overhead door. All right? And then the balance of the work in the octagon and the, uh, beer stand, to bring it up to code.
In the budget for.
I'm gonna put that all in the budget, so you'll see all of those items on this list that we didn't approve tonight in the budget. Are we okay?
Well, that's fine, but still.
Okay, yep.
We got her squared away. All right, item F, administrative associate position.
So, Counsel, we completed interviews, uh, this past Thursday, August tenth, um, for the admin associate, uh, position. We actually had sixty applications total. We interviewed about, um, fifteen of those candidates. Four have been certified by the, um, Civil Service Board. Um, and so before you, um, we have the recommendation, and I'm gonna get her name wrong. Um, Kelly Hayes, H A, Mike, you have my phone right. Hawes, sorry, um, I knew I was gonna butcher that. That is the staff's recommendation, um, pay grade three, step two, based off of current salary. And then conditioned upon successful completion of employment background.
Is that a motion?
I'm ma-
I don't wanna make motion C.
I'll make a motion to- Hire Kelly Hawes at, uh, the pay grade three, step two. Um, yeah, effective, uh, whenever she can start, I would assume.
And can you add to that, if you're willing, the setting the eligibility list to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-
Two.
Second.
What about successful completing, completion of the background check and the-
That's part of it, yep.
Employee screening process.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, who seconded it?
Frank.
I did.
We got her. Further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Uh, let's see, prove the bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Uh, just one thing, and you heard it from the League of Minnesota Cities tonight, and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is asking cities to send in a, a, uh, request for a special session.
Oh, okay.
Some encouragement?
Yep. If, if you're okay with doing that, we can just do it and have you sign it on behalf of the city, if that's fine. We don't need to do it as a resolution like some do.
All right, that's all I got. John, have you got anything?
I don't.
All right, John, Dave?
Wade Avenue.
I was going to one end to the other, but I'll start with you, Dave.
All right, Wade Avenue started today.
Yes.
Uh, second moving on along in the next couple of weeks here, so things are starting with the project, exciting, exciting times.
All right.
You know, she's got detour signs out on County Road seventy-five, four?
Yeah. No.
Already placed for Second Avenue?
It, it, the sign says it's gonna start next week, though.
No, they're, are out by the Roosevelt on-
I did, I didn't notice that too, I remember, yep.
Yeah.
They tipped him up right away, Dave.
Everything's up, it, it's, it's not in effect yet, though.
Bill, you got anything else?
No.
John?
No, sir. Go friends. Wanted to talk a little more about asphalt shingles.
I know where I'm gonna stick 'em.
I hope, um-
It's good to be, to have a little humor.
On the roof, on the roof, on the roof. Just for people that didn't know where I was.
I, I hope now there are some people at home watching tonight who give me grief, because we don't discuss anything at this meeting. We always do is pass, 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 and we, and we're done. So, there you go, that was your entertainment for tonight.
That's right.
That was a good call.
Anybody from the audience got anything? All right, if not, we are adjourned at seven fifty-seven.